I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Not seeing any clergy here tonight, public input? Anybody wish to speak, public input? Seeing none, amendments to the agenda, council members? The amendments to the agenda? During now mayor's report, first thing we're going to talk about is a graduate of leadership Kansas that we have in our debt falling. Congratulations on completing that and there was a graduation ceremony on 10/28. The council members, you're all welcome to join this one, join Greg, I think he's going to try and go. I'll see if my calendar works out, but please let Jerry know, I think it's by the 19th?
New York City.
New York City? Oh, is there anything to step up, tell us about that, or just give us a brief scenario and again, congratulations to you and, you know, working with the course and that so.
First of all, I just want to say thank you for allowing me this opportunity. It was very much so unexpected. The applicants have applied for this and when I look around at my class, I feel like people are a lot more highly qualified than I am to participate in this. That being said, I have made some friendships through this that I think will be lifelong friendships and wonderful networking connections. I've learned a lot about my state, I've learned a lot about state government and the issues that each corner of the state I think has to deal with that are probably very different from each other. From rural areas to immigration policies that we need to reconsider. Last month, we went to Ellsworth, Maxim Security Correctional Facility, so I learned about businesses in the state. So a lot of interesting things that I've learned and it's been a very good educational opportunity for me. I would highly encourage anyone who is nominated for this to apply in the future and participate if selected because it was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And I think Cora would attest to that as well. And I met her, got to do this in 1999, I believe, so I'm a second generation in my family to be able to participate in this. And my letter came out, it was really a very good view of what this program did for partners that I was working with as well. So again, I want to thank you for paying for this work and this was something that would have taken a little bit out of my budget, from my home budget for the year. And I'm one of the few in my group that had it paid for by the company, a couple of places I worked for, so I appreciate that. Do you have any questions for me?
Oh, that last one. What was your favorite part of the whole program?
As far as favorite thing that I experienced?
Saw, did?
You know, it has been so diverse. I've enjoyed the entrepreneurship things incredibly because I think in my own community, I see a lot of that in the smaller communities. I've enjoyed learning about things that I just had no idea about. And the immigration issues in southwest Kansas in particular, I did not understand fully the impact of that on the state, as a state. A little bit maybe on that portion of the state, but otherwise I did not. My favorite part honestly is the harvest and visit to the prison. I think I learned the most and I came away with a very different outlook on reform and need for reform, I think. Probably if I really look at the friendships, I think I just met some incredible, incredible people that I really admire, admire what they're doing and their work. And I've learned a lot from them and I think I've taught them some things about rural communities because it is not unusual for smaller communities to be well represented at this in this program. Most of the people that are in it come from areas like Alaska, Lenexa, Topeka, Manhattan, Georgia.
Knowing you, you place less work loudly on the map with people that are well placed in our state, so we appreciate that.
Congratulations. I'd also like to remind council and the public about a retirement of our Dave Reiswick on Friday from 3 to 5 here in this community group. It'll be 36 years. We've worked for our city, we've seen him out in the summer in the heat, the snow, you know, the snow in the winter and all the other times in that. And please come out and show your appreciation for Dave and the many years that he put in working through the public force department for our community, the veteran of our community and that. So please join in here during that time. Answering the bell, who was that?
Was it you?
It must have been me again, so.
Someone said the sound's not working?
You did have to sample work on, we'll continue to work on that for those that are here last time for the viewing code. The next item has to do with the, our continued struggles in our community with events of racism and hate speech and that kind of thing. And there's an opportunity for all of us to go to Messiah Church on Monday night at 7:00 PM for a program that's called Funding Our Town. Something that's being put on again through Messiah Church and Mark Carlson, who's coming from ELCA, is very familiar with this program. It's an opportunity to look at this, it says coming together to stop highlighting communities and that. And there's, not in our town, not in our school, not on our campus, and I think it's very important, you know, it's another step for all of us that we can take in learning more about diversity, more about opportunities to educate and talk to others about these situations as you've come forward in that. And I would hope that everybody will join in being in Messiah Church on Monday night. Just as a community though, again, it's you and your neighbors and your kids and all of that talking about the situations that have happened, what that means to our community, what it means to that individual and, you know, what it means to the family and that. So please continue to have those conversations, to look for ways to be inclusive and be there for others, you know, at the time that they need from that. So thank you again for that. That's all I have for the mayor's report. Moving on to the consent agenda, what is your desire?
Motion to approve or adopt the consent agenda, please.
On second. There's been a motion and a second, roll call please.
Kelly, yes. Betty, yes. Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion carried. We have appointments tonight, A and B, both EMS and fire department. I'll ask the chief to rise and tell us about these individuals.
First I have is for EMS, Kyle Sandler, he's from Slidon, his grandparents live here and he's in the medical field. This should be an opportunity for him to get some experience with our EMS, he's already certified. And an opportunity for us to use him for that service. So I'm asking for him to be allowed to join the service.
Kyle, welcome.
Watch out Kyle, there's a quiz.
Then he works for the EMT.
Kyle, welcome and appreciate your gallantry to be a part of our service. Is there anything, just a few words of what you'd like to say about being an EMT and that so?
I'd love to, as soon as I have some words to say about being an EMT. I've kind of bounced off a lot of things, but took the EMT course, fell in love with it. So it's a huge interest of mine and I've always had family in Edlinburg. My grandmother lives down the street, my mom grew up in that very same house. So especially seeing how the city has come up in the last few years, he's really fantastic, he will have the opportunity.
Well Kyle, again, we appreciate you willing us to join and serve our community and serve others, so. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a second? Second. All those in paper say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Kyle, welcome.
Welcome Kyle. Double check picture if I can.
Did you read my sign? That one. We do want a picture here. Stay standing Kyle, we're going to go to the next one to the fire and we'll get your picture here shortly.
The next one I have is for the fire department and it's three members from the fire department. The first is Alexander Burks, the second is David Worthington, and then Eric Kruegerberg. And David and Eric are both, David's already in EMS, Eric of course is with the police department. So Alexander's the only one that's not here and of course they're on a fire call right now. So we must imply we're both pretty busy at the moment, but they're, so they're not here tonight.
Your motion?
Motion to approve.
Why didn't you hear who that was?
Rick or one of us is working.
For a second?
Do they have any choice?
Rick and Kelly. Discussion? During now, all those in paper say aye?
Aye.
All the same sign? Question, Jerry? You may have to step up.
David too, too.
Oh, wait. Turn over this side, I wish you'd gather. Thank you. Now is Dave, who's a real member, if he didn't get to come up, mayor? You would just speak? Is that right? Safety word, that'd be correct. Good enough.
No, I'm relying on the chief for direction of seating of that.
My name's David Worthington, I'm an EMT in town as well. Pretty new to it. I always dreamed of being an EMT in the fire department, I'm seated at the front. And I'm looking to be full-time somewhere else as well as part-time.
Well, thank you very much and again, for both of you being a part of our services and that, it's very much appreciated. Thank you all. Gary, finding signs, no report? No report. Nothing under old business, new business? Item A, budget transfer.
One, pass out a document on the background to correct something in line six where it said seven days a week to the end of the school year. Actually, what we're talking about is to begin of the calendar year. Proposal is to have an officer in and around Bethany campus for seven days a week, approximately eight to 10 hours a day. And to do that, we would need to transfer $30,000 to the budget for the police department in the personnel expense line item. To cover this $30,000, proposal is to take $30,000 from the street department capital budget. $90,000 was budgeted for the flood controllers restricted project. While we're still re-engineering that particular project, the funding for the project was part of the bond that was approved last meeting. And out of that, $90,000, only $12,887 was allocated towards the purchase of a new street department trust. So there's sufficient money to transfer out of that $90,000 capital line item to the police department personnel expense line item.
What is your desire?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Second. Discussion, please.
Once we get past the end of the calendar year, has there been any thought given to that, how we would proceed or if we would proceed or as far as budget?
At this point in time, no.
So we'd probably come back to that in December, or is? I guess that's what I'm following on, your question is.
I would say that we would evaluate whether that level of security is still needed.
Understanding that this is some extra money to cover these duties, will you have to have extra personnel in this?
Yeah, so we would probably try to utilize part-time officers of community duties.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Again, does this create a covenant for us as a part of the program?
It could, yes, cancel it.
Is there any concern that we're going to tax our force beyond their spread level, I'll get that word. Trying to cover these hours plus our hours and be able to cover the community.
Well, before last Friday, I had said no, but we just had an officer give us two weeks, so we're going to be a little short. So it will be a little more difficult and there might be some issues, we'll just have to review it as we go.
So the hours, I mean, we're talking about the hours a day, seven days a week, so as this progresses, I assume you and Greg will discuss it to see if, number one, it either needs to be increased or number two, it could be decreased and try and stay within.
And probably how the college in that discussion as well?
Well, that's going to be one of my next questions is to have that discussion with them. They still have security, campus security?
That's correct.
Or they have arrest authority or not?
They're just strictly.
And there's just one officer?
Right.
Security guard, I guess is the right word.
Well, they have some part-time help as well, but they do have security stuff and not a lot of enforcement.
What hours are you thinking if this is early evening, is that eight hours or is it four?
Well, we talked with, I mentioned this to the college and they had indicated some areas that they felt that they needed more security. So we will sit down with them and work out hours when they feel, with any activities in advance, to see when it is that they.
So that could change.
It could change.
In addition to just patrolling, is there, is there any discussion about, since there's going to be additional time there, for maybe an opportunity to build relations between the police department or strengthen those relations between the police department and students on campus and their staff? Maybe make it a positive thing besides just patrolling the campus?
I would hope so.
What guidelines can you have set forth for that, Tim, is there, I mean, I realize this is first school gap here tonight and where you're going and, I mean, are these all things that you had conversations with and the expectation of guidelines? And out of what you expect from your officers, you know, as they do patrol, either on foot or in the car?
We haven't sat down and talked about it yet.
Okay.
But we will be going over it.
Where did this idea come from? I'm not really sure. Okay, I think that's important enough, too.
It is.
This is our, the city that's bringing it forth from the college.
I guess all I could add was just to reinforce what you guys have already discussed, just to make sure that we continue to speak with the college and make sure we're doing what they feels needed as well. But it sounded like it started in that.
Well, it started, I don't think we're completed, but it started.
The discussion started and chief spoke with the dean of students and basically the discussion, the outcome of the discussion was, if this was approved, then they would sit down together to work out schedule, expectations, et cetera, so.
Greg, is this enough to exceed $30,000 by the end of the year?
Correct. Actually, it's to transfer $30,000 total into that budget. Because we will definitely need that budget authority, being an officer, short. Because of overtime, potential overtime, yes. Ideally, we could cover a lot of our extra time with, whether it be off duty sheriff's officers or part-time officers for other services, but can't guarantee that.
I assume it's understanding, but also that the priority, you have a primary list of what needs to be done. I mean, of course, you have an officer already and there's nobody else to go or whatever, that may turn into a larger community policing, you know, with rounds around the college at certain times and those kind of things.
That's correct.
Additional questions of Tim or Greg?
Is that already being done, that larger community, I mean, they're focused more around the campus during the evenings or nighttime?
Focus on the campus, officers have actually walked around the campus in the evenings, but it's sporadic.
Thank you, Kelly. The clarification that I would make on my standup was if we're, for sure an officer, we don't have somebody to patrol the town, then, you know, maybe the damage, there's, it's truly the town with lots, you know, don't touch around the college and doing the things already do, and just want to make sure, just clarify, so.
This may not be the time to ask this, but worst case scenario anywhere would be an active shooter type situation. Do we have a plan, city plan or Bethany plan or county plan or state plan on how to respond to something like that?
It's the same as a disaster plan? Then an operation plan, what do you have?
We're ready, or covered, we have, as well as we could be anyway, I guess. It's been discussed plan and trade within the police department to respond to an active shooter, not only with local police department, but with other agencies also.
How long does, what do you anticipate it would take to get another officer of your life?
We'll probably put out an ad, take applications till the end of October and then set up interviews, hopefully sometime in November, hopefully be able to hire sometime in November.
And then the question is, is it the end of the academy or do you hire elsewhere?
Do they still work, will be writing with another officer for the county, takes how long? I'm sorry?
14 weeks.
13 weeks?
14.
14.
I'm glad it wasn't 13, I think. Other questions? Of Tim or Greg? Roll call please.
Kelly? Yes. Betty, yes. Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
abstain.
David?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I V is the EMS billing notice and intent to award.
In the package, it was distributed, the notice of intent to award for the EMS building didn't have an amount for the rate per hour to compensate in the event that the intent to award was terminated. This has been negotiated and the document's been distributed to you that has a watermark says proposal language. At an hourly rate has been stricken and would be for the lump sum of $10,000. So what this means is, one, on this project, we will move towards value engineering to get that to a cost no greater than $700,000. If we cannot get there or if we do not move to final award, then the general contractor on this project, Wings and Company Construction, would be paid the lump sum of $10,000 for it, and towards getting a value engineering project to $700,000.
What's your desire?
Will we approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
And do the second in discussion? Greg, do you feel this will get us to where we need to get to to get this thing up to center or maybe actually?
Well.
Is that the last pull-up?
Yes, this is the last pull-up to get to the amount.
Rural development's on board, state architects on board, everybody's on board, just with this project, we can value engineer it from there.
Yes. Hopefully. We feel like there's some room with the elevator situation to get to there, or do we know?
There's a, there's a couple of different options that we are looking at. One of them is the elevator, but this is also part of the value engineering process is looking at the different options to either include or remove from the project to get the price or cost to a level of $700,000.
Additional questions for Greg? Kerry?
Okay, Mark?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes. Kelly? Yes.
Motion carried. I see the mannequin, the crane, the EMS.
And EMS would like to purchase a mannequin, it's a full-size, flat back, it's like, we'll set on the ground and they'll pull around these and actually be picked up, carried and used in rescue situations. It also allows us to do ripias so that you can hook up our monitor to it and do testing and training with it, is that right? This is a budgeted item, recommendation is to purchase it from Roundtree? Boundtree. It has $1,695, so it's.
What's your desire?
Motion to approve.
What now?
We have now $1,695.76 to Boundtree metal.
Thank you very much, is there a second?
Sorry.
And move to second and additional discussion? What's the expected life?
A rescue Randy?
That was kind of a serious question, it's either if you're bouncing around on a rescue Randy or is it like?
A rescue Randy?
Rescue Randy?
Says right there.
If you're bouncing Randy around, it's a huge, uh, issue. I have no ideas.
But you don't have to pay rescue Randy yourself.
And he's not carbonized or not?
These usually have, these usually have a pretty long life because they're, they're not huge, eight hours a day, seven days a week, so they're. not huge, eight hours a day, seven maybe weeks, so they're.
The concern I was asking about was this, this guy Randy must have some inside stuff that'll get the ripia and those kind of things going, so if you're bouncing around at a rescue, you know, how long does his inner flash?
Well, there's a separate part, isn't it?
That's correct, simulator's a separate part. Oh, okay.
He's carrying the van first.
Well, that's, I'm happy now, so is there any other good questions, Chief, in reference to rescue Randy? Carrie, none? Carrie?
Mark?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Randy's on board, so. Let's go to item B, which is fire, fire personal protecting equipment. We have some new guys, we gotta add some more equipment. Yeah, it's an unfortunate layer of the guys that we are putting on, don't fit the normal sort of, having to purchase new equipment. All right, what is your desire?
Motion to approve. In the amount of four thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents.
I second. It's been moved to second, what's your, any discussion?
This kind of go on considerably more than the quote from Conrad Fire, is there a reason to be with?
Conrad Fire, it's just for one, one. One.
So you'd be, that would be a trip. That would be a good reason.
Do these meet all the standards obviously that we've been putting out, are they a new standard as we go with them?
They're, they're, they meet the standards, man, it's the same equipment that we're currently using.
And do we routinely, um, I mean, are these updated, replaced every five years or whatever?
Supposed to be. I don't think it's five years, but maybe a little longer like that, but.
All right, we need provisional discussion on three steps of PPE.
Fire five hundred and eleven.
Carrie?
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Item A, street name, sign with it. What do you desire?
Would we approve?
And move, is there a second?
Sorry.
Move to second and discussion? Greg? Now, motion for move. What do you approve there? What was your motion, Greg?
Uh, workable useful products, costing nine hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Secondary, are you okay with that? Timmy, what you saying, you think about those? So, or something like that? Can we sell the old ones on unit?
Have they given that consideration? I'm sure they're flagrant across the world.
You'd be surprised.
Make them available for a wrap, if you'd like.
So, these are decals then, they're not, they're not pressed or? It's, it's all detail, do they come with details all the time?
So, the old ones that have been there for sixty years are great, you know, they're wearing out the ones that were made up by years ago. There might be people that want to purchase some, I don't.
We're not throwing away.
Pardon?
We're not throwing away.
I don't know if they can administer that program, Carrie, just.
Well, I see the signs listed here, you know, the ones that are going to be replaced, so it's just, I mean, what is the percentage of signs in that we're, we're looking at here roughly?
It's a very small percentage, we're gonna, we're gonna get a lot more. I probably will bring this again before the end of the year, but I didn't want to spend the entire budget necessarily, because.
So this is kind of starting the process, if you want?
Same process we did in the, correct?
Correct.
We have so many signs. We get the signs in, the group goes out, takes down the old little paints of all, and then what's to do with that?
They're basically, we'll be changing up the whole.
At the same time?
Because of different mounting brackets.
Go to U channel?
Yes. The, uh, they're basically the same size, no, they're very big. But that's the point of paying the, being sized and reflective requirements from a manual vehicle traffic control.
So until you change them, with the old ones are still good, but if you change them, you have to bring the new ones in to play, play for sale?
Yes.
And they're required to be upper and lower case? The opposite of that, something like that, plate change.
Apparently, yes.
Any other good sign questions? Carrie?
Mark?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Sign, Carrie. Item eleven. Executive session.
Do you want to move on to executive session, fifteen minutes to discuss matters regarding the purchase of Grim State and to move the city administrator and to return to regular session at seven twenty?
You heard your motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
On the same sign? Public will return at seven twenty?
Do I think you're generating?
Do you want to move the department reports? All right, I'm gonna take the liberty and serve here, we need to schedule a special council meeting for next Monday, the tenth, at five thirty, in the chambers. To discuss the purchase of real estate. Five thirty next Monday. So we should dine at, let me say, get off, we're gonna have some eating, we're gonna have church, not in our town. Five thirty Monday. Pardon, item A, it's one of works.
And by now, I'm, I'm retiring, I'm spreading probably people, so, and, uh, that's gonna be some changes on how things go here, because I do public works and I do building inspection, and I have not got a second, can't find someone to come here and do your building inspection, but I think it would be very expensive to, to have a contractor and a building inspector. Hopefully it'll get a call from one, so I've been trying to explore what we could do, and, uh, try to hire one person, I think that would be best for you in the long run, that may be expensive, you could hire, uh, an inspector from one of the nearby cities, I think. I think they would probably, you know, do the job, uh, to the nth degree, but I don't think they use their discretion for what's best for the city on, on every matter, I think they just follow the book and not try to look, your town is old, and I don't want things. Third option, it is a start that I've been looking into, uh, there's a company called ABTS, a nonprofit company out of Virginia, they've been spreading out through the country, they currently have offices in Kansas City, Missouri, and they recently done a survey through the league of Kansas municipalities about interest in the state of Kansas for, uh, inspection services, for, you know, and mainly what they're doing is for smaller towns that don't have the need for the pleasure for a full-time inspector, they provide the service, um, they can do plan review, they can do permit writing, there's, there are quite a number of things they can do for you. There was interest in the survey that they did, and they are currently negotiating, ABTS and the Kansas municipalities are currently negotiating with each other for a master services agreement, at which time then, that, that would be what any municipality in Kansas could work under, is that master services agreement, and be the same thing for everybody. I think, I think this might be a good fit for you, but I gotta point out that no matter which way you go, I think the price of buildings is gonna go up. But I think it's gonna have to start paying for itself. I've always probably err on the side of making it easy to build here, and, you know, I think, I think the cost is gonna go up. Within your options that I see out there for you, I think they're gonna go up, so. I think this will be a study session when we get some details, I, I'm sure it will be a study session.
Tim, do you have any idea when they'll get together on that, or is there?
They're working on it by now, um, they are hoping to have things in order in the next month or two, where they're, uh, they had asked if I would host a meeting of small municipalities in our area, I said I would, to generate, you know, give them, give them a chance to show what they can do and see what is out there for this area.
Tim, when you say building, the cost is gonna go up, is that building inspection costs or building?
Yes.
It's, the builders are still gonna build to the same standard that they have.
Right.
We just have a different inspector on the job now.
Right.
So the cost of these?
I, I charge fifty dollars an inspection and I usually don't, I never charge more than that if I have any inspections, but, you know, recall how many it took to do the dormitory, a lot. Any repeats, will be more money, it's just, it's gonna be across the board, you know, whether it's somebody locally that you hire or.
Changes or, changes process, so.
Well, what does a city the size of Marquette do, or do they have another inspector?
I don't, I don't know that they do, maybe they do.
Because they have a housing development, so somebody has to do some.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. Is there a, is there a training program, um, a certification, um, to be, that they can achieve?
Construction engineering. There is a.
They have night classes, I think, if you're interested.
There is a local construction engineer that would probably work well with that, but unfortunately, he's building around here and, you know, and being inspected himself or his family.
Other questions of Tim, reference building inspections?
Well, we have to be thankful that he's bringing this to our attention now.
You mean, is that that he's retiring or the inspections?
Oh, both. You couldn't vote to move this retirement forward, but, just kidding.
Yes, I agree, Tim, that's great, appreciate all your emphasis. Convention and visitors bureau.
Start off with the sunroom, we hired some new people to include Bethany students, um, to begin the fall for kitchen and set up positions, and it's been good to have some extras and on top of what we've hired in the past, and more people that they jump in and cover some more, um, events, sports seasons, things that change, that's sometimes a difficult thing to cover. And a recommendation has been made for bettering service, and to the new gym, trail staff, there are some things that we feel like are doing an okay job of, but maybe not a great job, so Amy has made some recommendations, uh, to those that are in management. And on the CDB side, uh, we have artwork almost completed, and today they sent it to me, it was done, except for they still haven't put dot com after they did Lindesford, so I just sent it back one more time to get that approved, and then we should integrate for final approval, and we'll be moving forward to a new billboard up on November first, and the new artwork is fantastic, I think you'll really like it, um, to begin to look at some different ideas, and I worked with a company out of, like, First Amorness, and a new artist, and really took the ideas that I gave him right out, and he took a great job, and it was nice to be able to work with someone who could do that and had, um, had the ability to see that some vision, so it was good. Uh, one of the most interesting things that happened in my office, probably in the last month, just about a week and a half ago, I had a company called, that wanted us to participate in a marketing campaign with about thirty other, um, communities or states or tourist and destinations across the United States, and as we began a sales pitch, I just kind of chuckled, and I said, before you get too far into this, I'm just gonna tell you, we're a really small community, and we don't have tons of money, and I know that what you're going to offer me is far above what I can afford, so I will just be kind and, and I'll just tell you in advance that we probably don't even need to have this conversation. And he said, well, let's go and talk about this. So to be long story short, this company is, um, the publisher for Horizon Magazine, they typically market to people with a household income of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year or more, so very high-end magazine, they were selling these packages for one dollar shy of twenty-five thousand dollars, which of course, you know, is beyond what we can do here, but anyhow, he said, what we are looking at in this package, we want one hidden gem in the United States, and he said, we have, and I asked him how they found this, he said, we have eleven researchers that were looking for places or communities throughout the United States, and we just believe that Lindesford is the one hidden gem we want to feature this year, and he said, what we would like to do is offer you editorial, um, an advertisement in Horizon Magazine, and we would also like to feature you on our Wall Street electronic billboard during the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade, which would be pretty fantastic, but, um, he said, give me a dollar figure that you could come up with, and I said, well, this year's budget, I could give you a thousand dollars. And he kind of chuckled, he said, well, before we came up, he said, I think if you could offer me three, we could do this, and I said, well, I just, I cannot at this point in time, I just cannot do that, because I, and I told him about approval process, I would have to go through another certificate for the time before I could even have it approved again, so we would do it, and he said, well, could I call you again next year, because we are interested in this, and I said, go, we can call you, but I need to know in advance, so, it may be more efficient work for next year, it's kind of interesting. Horizon Magazine, if you look at it, and features people like Richard Branson, Virgin Air Force, or, um, aircraft, uh, Bully Hon has them featured on the cover articles, so it's a very new magazine, and I got on their website, looked it through, it appears to be something that was very legitimate, and, and I thought it was interesting that whatever we're doing to inform ourselves is getting out to a larger audience in the way that we would hope, so, it's great. Any questions?
This magazine starts with an H?
Horizon, thanks.
Horizon.
Horizon.
Holly, I know this isn't fully your area and all that, but on the dollar board, there's an empty pad in front of the sunroom, it's been there for quite a while, there's two more now.
The horse is reden.
Okay.
And do you still have it in your possession? Okay, I don't necessarily, but it was clear.
Well, we worked, we worked. Uh, that's not the problem, is the fact we didn't know if there's more work to be done, is, you were told there might have been some extra work to be done, so we've been sitting up.
I think Gretchen may be done with it, but maybe Steven was my understanding, potentially done that.
But we can, I think it's, I think we'll get it on there, it's right here.
Here's my concern, that all of those are sitting empty, and somebody's got a trip home.
I don't know about the others, just for.
Oh, sorry, there's trees that we don't have any down here, it's trees on the other end.
Going in this way.
Trees, dollars is a fifty-seven.
On the subject of the billboards, I would add that, uh, the one that we're giving up was, um, there will be a contractor, it was signed, uh, by Smoky Valley Development Company, so Lindesford's gonna be able to keep that sign, I guess we're not sure what's on the block yet, but basically we maintain possession of the sign, which we exit.
The three.
My understanding is it will be used for planning sets, if they would desire to get advertising on there, it will be used for local businesses or local events, art, um, the arts, whatever we thought was necessary, and those entities will be painted around, so. And where's the location of that? We gave up, or the CDB was. We gave up, or the CDB was going to give up the billboard that was closest to Salina. And so we took the one that was closer to Topeka in our last council meeting. So we will, Wookiee Valley Development went ahead and signed a contract for community use for the closer billboard. So we didn't need that. And they were very gracious to wait. So we were actually very impressed to make that decision.
And that's located like between 9th Street and 135, right, in that westbound.
Very close to that.
Any additional questions for Holly? Thank you, Holly.
You're welcome.
I wasn't sure you were gonna wake up there. For those in the back, it is this. He's walking, he's slipping as well. For us in the front, we're like...
Well, there are a lot of things I could talk about tonight, but one of the things that I haven't had an opportunity to really share with you is we recently hired an administrative assistant for the police department, Angela Eastwood. And I guess I just wanted to share with you, you know, what a great job she's done. She came in as a computer programmer. We just went through some computer switchouts and she was actually helping to figure out some of the problems. Very intelligent. We kinda threw it all at her. She absorbed it and now she's starting to make it her own. So there are some changes that are coming out of the police department because of her. And, you know, like I said, I just think she needs some, some praise for, for her work that she's been doing for us lately. And know that the police department appreciates everything she's done so far. So I'm gonna share.
Tim, before you leave, just give me a bit on EMS and bar. Are we, are your staff in all their detail?
Fire department will be at 26 and so there will be, there's four openings. We're bound by orders that have only 30 fire fibers. And I've asked those to kind of hold off recruiting until after the first year so that we can get through this cycle. Or just bring on certain bodies, people. Hold off, they're just gonna hold off. And EMS, I think is doing very well. The nice thing about having large numbers of EMS is that there's less chance of burnout. Cause we've had a lot of problems with that. We really get the ETS in and they're covering five, six shifts, one more a week. And, you know, that's about a two-year, and they're, they're out the door. So if we can get a large group that shares a lot of the shifts, we can sustain those people for long periods of time. We're really excited about that.
How many do you have now, do you think?
I think it was like 19 or something.
That sounds about right.
Yeah, def- radio gear and all that for everybody. Who has to do that? Well, you know, we're, we're kinda sick with pagers right now for a lot of the new people. And our radio system's gonna be changed now.
Right.
So, you know, a lot cheaper.
Tim, what about the insurance situation? What's the word on the old one? And are we still fighting down the insurance company?
Yeah, Greg's been doing a lot with that, so.
You can just say yes and go.
Yes.
So we are fighting down. What about the new ones from Slade County?
Slade County was gracious enough to loan us an ambulance, but there's no time that I've been told that we will keep it as long as it's covered under our insurance, which so it is. So, you know, we'll use it until we can figure out what we're gonna do next.
Does that mean we're back to doing transfers in that now? Or are we still using Salina for a lot of non, non-mercy versus...
We are doing some transfers.
Okay.
But we keep these Slade ambulants in the community.
Anybody else, Timmy, have questions?
Well, about the ambulance, Greg, I mean, ignorant question on my part. How come the person who hit the ambulance is the responsible, will replace it all? Well, that's part of the process right there. My last special was Thursday, last week with the claim's adjuster for EMC Insurance, which is the city's insurance provider. And then they've been in contact with American Family. American Family said they would cover 80% of the value pending a copy of a written report from the driver of the ambulance. We have a written report that's been forwarded on. It's gonna get resolved. And I think, I mean, if they're saying that now, they pretty well accepted responsibility. They wanted, EMC thought we were in dire need of the ambulance right away. So what they were doing was subrogating the claim, which means they're gonna go ahead and pay and then try and collect the money from the other insurance company. And I totally pulled off because I said a couple of things is, is one, if you don't get settled timely and we were new with the other, we were new with you and you don't settle timely with the other, it's gonna count against our experience. I said, plus, we're paying a deductible on something that we're not at fault. So, and I explained where we were with the ambulance loan from City of Salina. And so they stepped back and they presented to the regular family. And we've also had some issues about that.
And the cot?
Uh, the cot, we got a check for and we're willing to go out and replace it. We've got a regular fire letter that says...
We can't, we can't prove it for you.
Yeah.
It's more than seven miles an hour.
Yes. Was it eight?
Eight.
Eight. Yeah, that's right.
Any other questions for Tim?
I have one more.
Scott, here, back to Tim. Did you have bottles?
Yeah.
That sneak up us? I'm just getting out there because they have eight bottles they have, you know, and all that just seems like a... I'll ask you later. But we're okay. We have protection for everybody. Everybody else, we have bottles they can use if they need it.
We have good bottles.
Okay. That's the key. I just wanted to make sure we have good bottles.
And, you know, we did nine bottles in the, in the past.
Yeah, that's correct.
But those were our worst nine bottles. I mean, those were the worst that we had.
Okay, let's go to the incident. I just wanted to be sure we have air for somebody who's running with fire.
We are looking at a grant right now for that equipment as well, so.
Other questions, anybody? Matt, Jamie, did you have a question?
Any questions for Jerry?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those saying aye. Thank you all very much.